Yeah, it's going to be in my next steps. Yeah.
I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, August 28, 2019. Please rise for the -- fudge the flag.
I fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. We have a hearing, a public hearing on the 2019-2020 updates to the Code of Conduct. Being a public hearing, we have somebody to speak, Lorraine Loning, a stranger to us all.
Good evening, Lorraine Loning, district resident. I want to talk about the Code of Conduct, two parts. A few years ago, you guys had a segment on social media and about posting things, which I thought was a little absurd, that it was kind of, you know, really broad. You couldn't post anything, prom pictures, graduation, and I'm happy to see that that is gone, because Grandma wants to see those prom pictures, okay? The second thing I want to talk about is the dress code. Again, I'm happy to see that there's some movement on that. In the past, it seemed to be very gender-specific, it was very targeted towards clothing girls are more typically likely to wear, so I'm happy to see we're moving into a more progressive stance on that. There is one line in the dress code about, you know, anything that is disruptive to the school or education process, I think is the terminology, and I understand the need to have that, you know, arrow in your quiver to kind of deal with umbrella stuff, but I would like to see that maybe even tightened up too down the road. Thank you. Um, no.
That was a good try. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public or from the board about the Code of Conduct? There being none, we will move to the approval of the Code of Conduct. Do I have a motion to approve the Code of Conduct 2019-2020?
Motion.
Second.
Sorry.
Yes?
No, I thought Eric should speak before that.
Well, we've moved, we haven't voted, Eric can speak.
There you go.
Now.
Yes.
Okay.
So every year, we have the Code of Conduct on the agenda over the summer, so that way we're not making any modifications in terms of addressing conduct in our schools in the middle of the school year and making any modifications. So this being no different than any other year, however, last year, when we put up the Code of Conduct to the board, we had said that we were going to start a process to review the district Code of Conduct, as Mrs. Loning just said. We did have a committee, the committee has started that work, as she mentioned, there are a number of different modifications that have been made. When we, after the board votes on it, if it's approved, there will be a cover sheet that delineates all of the specific changes that are going to be in the Code of Conduct. The changes include that there's going to be an update to the DASL coordinators due to the shifting of staff. There have been some adjustments in the Code of Conduct, however, some of the things that you have mentioned are going to be continued under evaluation moving forward. There were some modifications that were made in Appendix 1, under the Discipline Awareness Summary, also under Appendix 1 regarding to the support and disciplinary response to any sort of misconduct, and under Appendix 1 on the student discipline grid. Once again, there's going to be a committee who's going to be continuing this work into the 19-20 school year, and we'll have another update for the board next summer after that work is concluded.
And I wanted to add something to that, so, and I'm going to be presenting that this later on this evening, but I wanted to discuss how one of our task force, which is a social-emotional task force, collaborated with the Code of Conduct, because one of the issues that came up was student discipline and the Code of Conduct. So they have now begun a collaboration, and they're starting to, the goal is to embed social-emotional curriculum into the Code of Conduct and marry those two together for the next year. But there is going to be a lot of committee work, so Lorraine, I think that you should get yourself on one of those committees, especially the dress code committee.
I will make sure of it.
Any other comments?
I think there was also a report out from the current Board of Ed that changed the old disciplinary actions, where the old memo was, if you did it wrong, it was tied to your federal funding, and they're recommending removing that.
Okay, yes. Well, they take a look at your--
There's too many.
Purely based on your discipline.
The VADA report, right, it's tied to our VADA report.
Yeah, but they've recommended that that be up to each school district, not set by the federal government.
Right, not a punishment.
Right.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. I forgot to mention Anthony regrets that he cannot attend, and Maeve regrets that she can't be here tonight, and Suzanne said she'll be late. There she's not, so that's true. Public hearing on the approval of the district-wide safety plan. Do we have any public input on that?
Wow.
Lorraine?
Oh.
May we discuss this at all, or not?
I think Frank wants to get up and speak a little bit.
Great.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Rodriguez, cabinet members, colleagues, and the Monroe Woodbury community. I'm going to give a brief update regarding the public hearing on our school safety plan. In accordance with the New York State Education Law, Section 2801A, which mandates that every school district Board of Education within the state adopt and amend a comprehensive district-wide school safety plan and building-level emergency response plan regarding crisis intervention, emergency response and management. Such plans shall be developed by a district-wide school safety team and building-level emergency response team. We at the Monroe Woodbury Central School District, over the last several months, working with our district school safety team, have amended our district-wide safety plan. Further, in accordance with the State Education Law, Commissioner's Regulations 155, a mandated 30-day public comment period took place and was advertised on our district website from July 12 to August 12. The final component, prior to the Board of Education's approval and adoption, is this public hearing, opportunity allowing participation by interested parties. It should be noted that our public district-wide plan is developed and meets the mandated parameters in Safe Schools Against Violence in Education Act, SAVE, which was passed by the New York Legislature and signed into law by then-Governor George Pataki back in 2000. Further, this is the only, this is only the public version of our plan that covers all mandated parameters and are different than our building-level emergency response plans. Our building plans are confidential. They have floor plans, blueprints, schematics, maps of other areas of the school, and they should not be disclosed, only to authorized school personnel and law enforcement. Policies and procedures for emergency response situations, sheltering, lockdown procedures, addressing medical needs, transportation, and emergency notification to parents and guardians are in those plans. Our plan is here and available and contains various subsections, which include, but are not limited to, the following: a policy statement, general consideration and planning, Monroe Woodbury Board of Education School Safety Plans teams and building-level teams, elements of the plan, risk reduction, prevention, intervention strategies, the standard response protocol, which is our lockdown procedures that we practice throughout our buildings, early detection, Code of Conduct, community awareness, our group of law enforcement that we work with closely, and finally, family reunification, incident review, just to name a few. So if there isn't any further public comment on this, then we're pretty much ready to present it to the board.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we all appreciate how you reach out to not only local law enforcement, but everybody. I mean, you bring everybody in to the fold to make sure that things are, you know, are fashioned correctly and supported by the entire region, so I think that's terrific.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Questions and comments from interested citizens? Do we have any?
No.
Can you vote?
Questions and comments from disinter-- no, never mind. Are there any updates on questions or comments raised in the past?
No, but there, I think, I think there's, people are wondering why we're not voting on the, on the safety plan?
Yes.
Because we have to present it, and then next month, we have to approve it.
Right.
So he did the presentation, it's been on the website. I believe we have to wait till next month, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so that's why we're not voting. I saw that you guys were, were wondering, but that's why we're not doing that.
Okay.
Approval of minutes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 14, 2019 regular meeting?
Motion.
Second.
At that. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Capital Project update discussion. Peter Raderoni. Director.
John, what I was going to, we were going to do a very brief presentation with a couple of pictures of the fields, if you don't mind?
No. We don't mind.
Did he say brief?
He said a couple of pictures, which means two.
That's true, if he said a couple, it is two. A few is three.
It's more than a couple.
Do not touch my computer, or I'm going to lose it. I have OCD when it comes to that. I see this jacket. I get crazy. Don't touch my computer.
Why do we give people who do such a great job a hard time, or is it just me that does that stuff?
We all do, it's a good thing.
It's a sign of affection.
Mountains, there's the Catskills there.
Sorry. Did you take that picture?
Yeah.
I thought so.
Top of Bel Air mountain.
It's a picture of the new fields.
There you go.
Okay, so, we're going to provide an update on the turf and HVAC Capital Project, and it's interesting, because what I did is I grabbed an old PowerPoint that I had, it was approximately one year ago, where this was just sort of an idea, you know, we were, we wanted to move it forward, we hadn't had the authorization by the community yet to move forward, we're still working on a lot of the details, legal and otherwise, and here we are, a year later, nearing the finish line, so it's, it's great, I'm happy. So the project itself, just by way of review, was HVAC improvements and roof improvements at the high school, so we're basically replacing the chillers and the cooling tower at the high school, and then replacing a small section of the roof at the high school where the chilling tower sits. So that's essentially finished, completed, the HVAC work is done, the air conditioning system is back on at the high school, the section of the roof is yet to be completed, we had a little issue with the HVAC contractor, but the good news is, that section of roof, there's no leaks, it's just 20 years old, and we figured when we're up there working, it would make sense to replace it.
We're going to put a liquid final top on it, so it just seals it.
So the other components of the project was replacement of the football field with a synthetic turf field, track replacement, replacing the field number 12, which was that mid plateau field, and relocating the varsity softball field to the baseball field. Total estimated project cost was about 8.4 million. So, the project status, so I mentioned that the work at the high school is essentially complete, the majority of it, no issues, there's one small change order on the agenda tonight for your approval, associated with this project, about $4,100. There were some valves that we figured we'd replace while we're doing all that sort of work. I mentioned the roof, the stadium field, so that's field number three, our field number three, is nearly, nearly done. All the excavation, drainage, subsurface work, curbing, turf installation, so that's a big milestone, that's actually, the carpet is down, the crumb rubber has been added, it's being added the other day, light poles, lamps have been erected, they look great, I mean, they look--
Yeah, it's four up, they're all done, and next week, they'll be doing the second set.
Yep, yep, I mean, the lamps, they're not the old cans of yesteryear, they're, you know, sleek and nice. The fence posts are in, not the fencing, that's going to occur either, probably next week.
By the end of the week.
Yep, underground piping and conduit is in, and, let's see, the final paving for the track surface, which is asphalt, is going to occur--
By the end of the week.
By the end of the week also.
The outside walkways have been done, so it's just basically the main lanes now, where they're going to run. It's the only place left that's locked up.
Yep, the D zones, which are the circular ends of the field, are done, so we're in good shape. I'm happy, we had a meeting with, with Land, the architect, yesterday, we had the contractor on the phone, so things are, knock on, knock on wood, in good shape. For next week, we anticipate having the fencing done, the final fencing, visitor bleachers done, bathrooms and septic tank system delivered, and probably started--
We're working on that as we're going.
Yep, they're going to do the hydroseating and site restoration around that area, around the field, next week. Items remaining, as of, we'll say Friday the 13th, which is our first home football game, the scoreboard will not be ready, so that has a long lead time to order that and fabricate that, and--
But we bought a temporary scoreboard, which probably is on site within the next 45 minutes.
That's right.
So we'll have it for games.
So the temporary scoreboard, it's nine by four, nine feet by four feet, will be used until approximately September 26.
Did we, can I just, did we buy that, or did we lease it?
We bought it, and what we'll do is use the temporary for it gets through the crunch, until our main scoreboard comes in, and then next spring, next summer, if we decide to, we can put it up on the middle school field and have it installed there.
Okay.
We can put a solar light, our power on it, and then we can run it with the solar, it's already wireless, so we're in good shape.
Okay.
Yep, so, let's see, the items remaining, probably the biggest, most significant one is the coating on the track, so that's the orange rubberized coating. That won't be finished by the time the field is open, this was something we knew about all along, has to do with the cure time of the asphalt, when you put that asphalt down, it requires about 28 days to fully cure before you can actually put the rubber down.
The oil comes out of the asphalt, you don't want it coming through the rubber, it ruins the top of your surface.
Exactly.
That's what the idea was.
So the scheduled start time for that would be sort of late October, and so we'd get through the fall sports season, we'd do the track, and that would be ready for the spring, for the track season. It takes approximately three weeks to finish the track.
And when you put that down, people should not walk on it?
No, they'll be closed off.
The whole area.
The track will be closed off for that time.
So it's the track and the D zones, which again, are the, the ends of the field would be, would be coated.
And that will be done after these fall seasons, so there's no reason for anybody, except if they want to walk on the track, they'd be using it.
So the good news is, the possible first use of the field would be a soccer game for September 6th, and/or a football game, home football game, on September 13th, Friday of September 13th.
Those are two marks we're trying for.
So we relayed that to the contractor, I think it was, right, their, their response was fairly positive about, they were aware of these dates, so we're, I think we're in pretty good shape to hit that. The upper turf field, what we've completed as of today, done most of the excavation, drainage, and subsurface work, some work on the light poles and the lamps, underground piping and conduit is in, so again, this was one of those things we knew we were going to focus on, field three, field 12 would come, you know, a little bit later. The turf start date is estimated to be September 17th.
If we look at that field now, it looks like a mess, it looks like it's just been blown up, but truthfully, they're about four days from putting down gravel. They need about three days for curbing, which is your outside perimeter for the turf, and to move some dirt around, so it's all coming together. When the last two days, there's been a humongous amount of difference in both fields, so it should be, like I said, within a week, you'll see a complete difference again up there.
So we're estimating a substantial completion date for the upper field of October 18th. So again, we'll, you know, the season will be, you know, mostly over, but hopefully we'll be able to get some use out of that. The final piece, the soccer, or softball field, rather, the expected start date on that is October 1st, and interesting, kind of exciting bit of news here, there's a possible no-cost upgrade applied, came to us and suggested that they do a partial turf installation on the infield of that field. I think they had some issues--
Girls softball, the whole infield will be turf.
Yep, so we're still working out some of the details, but installation of the drainage and the turf, I think that'd be kind of exciting and--
For free.
For free, yep, for the, for the same price--
The same price.
That we were originally just going to basically spruce it up and add some outfield drainage, so, so that's, you know, that would be nice if that comes together, I don't see any reason why that, that wouldn't be something that we get done.
It means they can play on it in March, with, you know, with a start, they won't be in the outfield, because that's grass, but at least they can be on the infield and play along with off-turf fields.
They don't move around that much in the outfield, then.
That's right.
For practice purposes, it'll be good.
Yeah.
Be great, for practice, yep, yep. So I know that sounds sort of a lot to digest, any questions on that, that slide, and we, any questions?
Will this rain delay?
No, actually, I was out there when I was saying it was raining, off-field drainage. I mean, it wasn't heavy rain by no means, but it was, they were working on it as they, as it was raining. So that's the whole idea, to have the drainage on the fields, and the rain that we've had now, unless we have a monsoon or something really heavy, where it just gets some money on that upfield, where they can't just drive around, they would have had hydroseated actually the lower field, if it didn't rain so heavy last week, that's what kind of pushed it back, but we're talking days now, we're not talking weeks and months or hours.
Anything else?
Picture first.
Moving on, okay, so I just thought I would talk very briefly about the, the project budget, and some of the change orders which are on the agenda tonight. I'll go through this quickly, don't worry. I'm, I'm reading you, don't worry. So, so basically, we start up here with our project budget, our ad alternates, a little over $8 million. We had a contingency of about $347,000, so the contingency is just, things come up in construction projects, and we know we're going to need something, something extra, that's what that's there to, to cover. So the total project budget was 8.391 million. So to date, we've approved about $221,000 in change orders, we're going to ask you tonight to approve another $89,346 in change orders. Together, these change orders, less our contingency, leave us with about $37,000, which is, is pretty thin, we had an allowance in the contract of $50,000, so, so that leaves us about $87,000 to finish the project. So we know that there are at least two additional change orders in the, in the pipeline, in the queue, so I had sent an email about this to the board, so we're close, but we're, we're pretty confident we're going to be okay. Again, it's not uncommon, right, Peter?
No.
To go right down to the wire--
Go right down to the wire, right down to--
On this kind of thing.
You don't want to walk away with any money, because then you ask for too much.
Right, and--
And you've been saying that, you've been saying it a long--
Exactly.
That it's going to work, you know, we were, we're close.
And the balance is the ad alternates that we said yes to, so the more ad alternates, the less contingency you have, and so that's, you got to strike that, the right balance to, you know, picking things that you want, you need, but not picking too many, that you're out of money at the end, and you, and you can't do the critical things, right? So I think we're in a pretty good place. Okay, so here's a picture, so this is a picture I took yesterday, just up in the bleachers.
Stunning.
It, you know, it is a turf field, I think you could literally go out there and start to play on it.
You can play on it right now, actually.
We're not recommending that, of course, but--
It's 30, you know, it's not cleaned up, there's too much traffic around it, there's, you know, construction, but the field's good.
Yep, it's basically, it's basically ready, the field itself. I don't know if there's anything you want to point out on this, Peter?
Yeah, but the blue truck is, behind the blue truck, you see the white head, that's where the bleachers are going to go, you see the two light poles, that's on the visitor's side. The playground, there's a playground way in the back, I'll just do a little stand on.
Oh, right here, yeah.
That's the playground we built for Central Valley today, this summer, that's new there. You see the, almost on the left-hand side, the Crusaders, you see the white where the purple is on the end zones, so that's it, we're looking from the top, bleachers down.
Yep.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, it really is beautiful, it's really come together. So here's a shot down the sideline, towards the high school, you can see this crane working on this light pole, so these are the main lights, there's a little bit lighting, lighting in here, and then just lower lights as well.
That's the lower lights for traffic, people walking.
Yep, and like I said, the lights look really good, very sleek.
It doesn't look like it has the 36-inch crown to it anymore. If somebody's tackled in midfield, they won't roll to the sideline.
It does it, John.
We built a ski lift ramp on the other side with all that dirt.
The purple is stunning.
If you recall, the one change order to take all that clay out was, you know--
Yeah.
Part of the guarantee that we're never going to have, you know, any sort of crowning or buckling or something. Let's see, here's another picture of the end zone, so this was one of the things that we had a lot of discussion about, that we go with the purple end zone, we ended up doing that, I think it, it looks amazing. Here you can see one of the spreaders distributing the crumb rubber, and they, they sort of fan that out, and they have a big broom that comes through and, and brushes it out to spread it a little bit more, let's see, and here's another shot, you can, you can see in here, so this is the area that would be, the asphalt would go into for the track surface, and you can see a little bit of the D zone over here, that's already, has the asphalt in place, everything looks great, and this is just a, a shot of the access road towards Central Valley.
That's a good one.
That is pretty much finished, and here's another shot back towards the high school.
That's the DOT project that has been going on, that takes it from the high school to Central Valley, and you can look up to your left past that machine, and there is now a guardrail in the student lot, so they can't drive over, so they worked with us to have to put that up today, there'll be more guardrails coming down--
Yeah.
In certain areas.
I mean, I just threw this in here, because I was in the vicinity, I took a couple of pictures, it looks really great, the, the road itself looks great, they're putting the gates on either end.
We'll be getting gates within the next couple of days, wood fobs that will go on buses and maintenance vehicles and whatever vehicles we want, that'll make the gates go up and down.
Cross-country trail is in, in courses, in good condition, looks--
Except for the bridge is the only one missing on any of the roads.
Looks good, so, again, it's all coming together, so, thank you, any questions?
You should have had a time lapse camera setup. I think, don't we, we do?
We have, we've been taking pictures from the beginning and--
You know, I love those time lapses, when you see everyone running very quickly, and it's just beautiful.
So, Mr. Cardone and I walked the field a week or so ago, and he's offered to take a pair of safety scissors and cut the remaining turf into little pieces--
I saved it for you.
Yeah, so that, just showing him, he needs probably two or three safety scissors, though, to get through it all, but, so that the clubs can sell the pieces of turf to make money for some of the different organizations within the school.
Great, I'll do it.
Like the dirt, I got it to the stadium.
Couple of safety scissors, he'll be good.
Chris volunteered as well, and me, I've done enough.
It's beautiful.
Okay, thanks, that's very impressive, and-- I think, I think we're, we're all pleased at, at the results and the progress, and that the, we didn't have inundations of rain that prevented things and to screw up the schedule, and so that's, everybody's pleased about that, aren't we, Lori?
Thank you. One of, one of the ads that was done, it's interesting, because when we first did this, we were looking at the porta-johns, you know, to, so that we could distribute them, so that people didn't have to walk as far, and one of the things that was put in as a change order is the infrastructure to actually hook the porta-johns up to the sewer system, so that-- So that we don't have to go and pump out the main ones when they get full, they just automatically go into the...
The sewer system? Oh, oh, great, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, those are the things, I don't, I don't know exactly, we put in the infrastructure for it, you know, the, the timing and everything else.
I love that, I love that. I was talking about it before.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
We're using our 215,000, 1,500 gallon tanks, 215,000 gallon tanks that will actually allow us to have 1,000 people go to the bathroom five times before that tank even has to be pumped out. So we're in good shape, we don't have to worry about it too much.
Plenty of capacity.
Oh my goodness.
That'll be tied, both trails will be tied into that, and then it goes out into us as soon as...
Chris is taking...
Chris can do it as many times as he likes.
4,099, you know.
So, I don't know if there's anything else you want, you know, the baffle system, so we want it to smell. The trails themselves have electric in it, heat in them, so when we could shape that way, they'll look nice. It's what we use for graduation, if you remember.
Are there provisions for cleaning throughout the season, or?
Well, my guys want to clean it, my staff wants to clean it, yes. And then we'll go for that. And I'll pump it Bobby two, three times. What's the play, but you see, I'm going to say I have to pump it, the solids, but the fluids will go out through...
They don't need the scripts.
Yeah, all right.
You're going to be on that committee.
Thanks, terrific. Summer enrichment update, who is giving?
Do you need it? I have it.
You have it?
Yes.
Let's switch computers.
Getting the summer enrichment report. On behalf of Brian, Brandon, and myself, we'd like to thank the Board of Education, the Cabinet, and Superintendent Rodriguez for the opportunity to speak about our summer enrichment experiences this summer, 2019. So I'm going to go over a review of the program. What we intended to do, based on what's happened in the past and how we're moving forward, we wanted to provide a camp-like environment for our children, where they were having fun most of all, and enjoying a large range of activities throughout the day. And I'm happy to say that, you know, we, we've received some positive feedback and, and hopefully we afforded the opportunity for those children that attended to have a good time and good experiences for their summer. So with our summer enrichment program, we'll go to the next slide. The summer enrichment program was done out of two locations. We were based out of Pine Tree, where we ran the classes for the summer enrichment program, and of course, the swim program took place at the Monroe Woodbury Middle School. And the courses that were offered at Pine Tree ranged from many different things. We included sports, STEM and robotics class, arts and crafts class, cooking class, and a theater and improv class. We serviced five different age groups throughout the summer, a three, four-year-old group, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11 and 12-year-old groups. Brian?
So we look at the enrollment, we had a very healthy enrollment throughout the summer, and it varied. The first week was before summer crusader started, so we had students that were going there first, and then summer crusader started next, families were on vacation. So you see a fluctuation in the enrollment. The numbers that you see there certainly are repeated kids. So the, the, the seven-year-old that started off with, with arts and crafts, he could have also, or she could have went to theater and improv and then went home, or possibly they went to all five classes. So the à la carte option was really good for parents, they enjoyed that. Their students, their children signed up for what they were interested in, and they came with smiles and they left with smiles. They really had a good time. And our staff, they were in our buildings from 7:45 in the morning to about 3:15, so it was, it was a full day and the kids really enjoyed it. So as you can see from our numbers, we had really a good, good enrollment, and we're very, very proud of what we're able to provide for our kids. And this is just the Pine Tree version, there's also numbers later in the presentation that will show the numbers for the middle school pool component. What parents were able to do is to go onto RevTrack and sign up for their child according to their age group and to their child's interest. So as you can see, if, if the child was 10 years old and they just wanted to do a cooking class, they knew they had to come to Pine Tree from 9:15 to about, you know, about 10:30. Parents, some parents chose just to send their kids to one class. Many parents chose to send their kids the whole day, and we provided a, a 45-minute lunch period. The kids were responsible for bringing their own lunches, we had a, a cooling system to keep their lunches nice. So it was really like a full-day camp. Some parents took advantage of that and stayed the whole day, and some parents, like I said, just came to a few of the classes. And it was very nice to have babies in our building, up to 12-year-olds. And the, the staff and the campers all interacted very nicely. I, we could, we could say with all honesty, there was really, there was no issues. Everyone was polite, nice to each other, they had fun, and it was a really good experience. Brandon?
So obviously, the pool being located in the middle school, any family that wanted to utilize the aquatics part of the program. Typically, what we saw was after the Pine Tree courses ended at 3 o'clock, the enrollment for the swim courses boosted, because the parents would pick them up, drive them across town, and then they'd get to utilize our Learn to Swim program. During the day, we had summer crusaders utilize the pool, which was separate from enrichment, but still took up a part of the day. We had varsity diving, which was in there, not practicing as varsity diving, but more in a capacity as like a preseason training program. And we also had varsity swimming utilizing the pool. In the leveled programs, we had levels one through six Learn to Swim, which is loosely based off of the American Red Cross. And there, we had 16 certified lifeguards and a few WSIs working with our students to make sure that instruction was always safe and, and, yeah, sorry. Our enrollment for swimming is run on 10 classes, not five, like they are at Pine Tree, because we have to fit a certain amount of skills into each level. So the student's curriculum is nine classes long, and then we have a thunder day, because even if it's thundering outside, you can't have swimming. So we, if we didn't have a thunder day, we turned that into a game day, which the kids really loved and enjoyed. For week one and two, we had 96 students. For weeks three and four, we had 93. And week five and six, we had a slight drop-off to 80. In week one, we had the varsity swimming course, and week one and two, the varsity swimming course, and week three and four, the varsity diving course, so that's why there's that little drop-off at the end. Week five and six is just Learn to Swim.
And so, one of the nice things that we experienced is that we, we had kids from all around the district coming to Pine Tree and the middle school for all these classes. And for Brandon and Tim, myself, we had a chance to interact with kids from Smithlow and Sapphire, North Main, CV, and of course, Pine Tree, and we got a chance to meet a lot of the kids from across the district. We're proud to say that we serviced 637 Monroe Woodbury families, students that came to our program, whether it be a combination of both swimming lessons and, and the classes at our building, or just one of the two. So a lot of kids really benefited, a lot of families benefited from this, so we're very, very happy with the summer enrichment results. Our, our plan is to continue as a district to kind of grow and adjust and modify to make it even better for future years. So we're always looking to improve, you know, we would get some suggestions throughout the summer from some parents, and they're really good suggestions. So things that we, we'll take to heart and we can have further conversations with Dr. Hassler and, you know, for, for future planning. And with that, we just very proud that we're able to help kids grow socially, physically, and emotionally throughout the summer. And it made our summer go very fast, I will say that. It was great. We, we started the Monday after school ended, and it went all the way through, that second week in August, so it was a lot of fun, and we, we really enjoyed ourselves. So any questions?
Questions for men?
I just wanted to say, I was happy that we were able to continue the program, because I know there was a lot of discussion with the construction at the high school as to whether or not we would even be able to have it. So I know any of the feedback that I got this summer was positive. I guess the couple of things I had were numbers-wise, is the 637 significantly less than what we've had when we've had at the high school, or was that, do we know if that was a, a drop-off because of the location this year?
Dr. Hassler, do you have last year's numbers?
I, I don't have, I don't have the numbers specific, because the numbers that I have, because the model is different, not inclusive of the athletic...
Right.
Piece, so you're kind of comparing apples to oranges.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
But we have to dig into that a little bit further to be able to kind of compare where we were at last year versus this year, but I...
And I think the option of the full day, I mean, that's, that was never the case prior to this summer, so I think that was a good opportunity also.
Right, well, one, one thing that I will say was that one, one mindset that was in place previously under the previous model that was still in place this summer was, and the, the running of the class was still contingent upon the number of people who signed up for the course. That we sat and we calculated, you know, the, the fee that we were paying to the person who was running the class in comparison to the number of people who signed up to participate in the class, and if there were numbers that were below a certain amount, the class wouldn't run, because it wouldn't, you know, it, it wouldn't financially support the running of that class. And that was still in place over the summer. So, you know, these numbers reflect the running of all the classes that were above that cutoff threshold of the number of necessary participants to pay for the, the staff of the program.
And is the plan right now to move it back to the high school, or we don't know yet?
I mean, honestly, we, we just had like our first debriefing meeting the other day, and, and we've, we're talking about a lot of different things. You know, one of the things that there, they mentioned in there was sort of looking at the model, I think one of the pieces of feedback that we have from parents this year was, I'll use arts and crafts as an example. Previously, there were specific courses in drawing, sculpting, painting, you know, individualizing, and we kind of consolidated that into one large arts and crafts sort of program. And we're talking about, are there ways for us to maybe, rather than doing a full six-week chunk of just arts and crafts, also breaking it up by individual courses like a sculpting, a drawing, a painting, so that way, by week, people might be able to sign up if, I just want drawing, rather than having to sign my stu, my child up for arts and crafts. So we're looking at, rather than just offering the basic categories, within the sports category, offering a week of basketball, a week of soccer for the kids, rather than just the broad sports programs. Students and parents can continue to sign their kids up, and, you know, this week might be soccer, and next week, next week might be basketball, and they might not care whether that is, but also, there are some people who are looking for some of those individual choices, and we're looking at ways to be able to potentially offer that in the future. So there's a lot of things that we're considering. I mean, I, I do think that the feedback that people were given was they were, they appreciated having it at a military school, you know. The concern was, you know, obviously with, with the summer and the air conditioning, you know, project that we had, were we going to have to move summer school to the middle school? I mean, the only thing that we looked at in terms of scheduling was there were some parents who, they wanted to have their child participate in some of the, some of the courses offered at Pine Tree, but in the middle of the day, there might be a swimming class. So even though they wanted to sign their child up for the full day, they still had to show, you know, we weren't transporting kids back and forth. They had to show up at Pine Tree to pick their child up and then take them over to the middle school. So we're kind of weighing that, whether it makes sense to keep it at Pine Tree or whether, you know, but we haven't really ironed out all of the, all of those decisions yet.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, I would just say for next year, if, if I would, it seems like a Pine Tree is a nice school, it's, it's small, compact, everybody can interact with each other. Where at the high school, people could be all over the place. It has to be more expensive to run the high school than it does to run Pine Tree.
Sure.
So unless the numbers really get out of, I, I would suggest that next year, we look at it and see who signs up again. I mean, unless we get numbers blown out of the water where Pine Tree is like to the max and it might be unsafe, maybe that's a better model, that they're closer and everyone's on top of each other, which is a good thing at this point.
Right.
Instead of being spread out to high school. Maybe we look into, there's a timeframe, maybe we have a bus that takes the kids from Pine Tree that want to go to swimming, no, a one or two drop-off, where the bus drives them over, that might be cost-effective.
Right.
It might be a better option than, I mean, if the kids are at the high school, someone has to walk them over to the middle school.
Down to the middle school.
So there's still a transportation component.
I mean, and, and there, there are a lot of factors that we have to kind of dig into. One of the pieces of feedback that we received in the move from the middle school to Pine Tree was in the theater group, because previously, the theater program for summer enrichment culminated in an actual performance at, at the end. This, this year, it was just broken up into a series of segments over the course of the school year, but we also didn't have the facility at Pine Tree to be able to have that scale of a performance. So, I mean, there, there's just a lot of factors that we have to kind of weigh in terms of making every single one of these decisions. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to kind of continue to debrief and, and sort of look at the state of affairs for next summer and then, and then go from there.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
For those who, who don't, out, out there in television land, who don't realize that this is all funded by the families, this isn't a, this isn't in the district budget, it does not fall upon the taxpayers. We will now have a strategic plan update. L.C.
As soon as I get my PowerPoint up. Trust me. A moment for technical debriefing.
Certainly. While we wait, Don Beeler will perform a tap dance routine.
I vote Dan.
Yeah, Dan? I think, yeah, Dan has more dancing skills.
I've just been on my special class. Ah, there we go. Yes. Got it.
Good afternoon, and I want to thank the Board for the opportunity to get up and give you an update on our strategic plan. What you're looking at is actually a logo that we designed that came directly from the strategic plan team, a committee, and it, you'll see it throughout the district. So this was something that was designed specifically for our district. And before I begin, I, I want to acknowledge the work. I'm just getting up to speak about what everybody else did, but I do want to acknowledge the work that everyone who was on this committee committed to, because I would say that approximately each individual probably spent about 70 hours. So I would like anyone who was a member of the committee to please stand up. Any of the committees. I'd like to give them a round of applause and thank you.
Absolutely.
I just want to give a brief history of the evolution of our strategic plan. This goes back to September of 2017, when we had prospective consultants come in and did a presentation for the Board of Education. We then decided on, in January of 2018, we selected PLC Associates, and we quickly, once we selected them, created a timeline and created what we call the Strategic Plan Committee. Later that month, in January, at the end of January, we administered surveys to five different groups, to parents, community members, teachers, students, and support staff. That survey was concluded in February of, February 9th, and we had over 6,000 responses. Those responses were integral to the work that we were going to do. And as a result of that, we created a strategic plan core team with over 50 members. That specific group was responsible for the following things. We were responsible for creating the beliefs, the vision, the parameters, and our strategic intents, and those are our long-term goal. And so in front of you, every board member should have a booklet, and you can, not at this time, but at some point, you can peruse through it and you'll see our strategic intents for each task force. Our first one was the curriculum and instruction, and what we gathered, what information we gathered from this particular survey was that our teachers felt that we were not giving them relevant professional development, and they felt that they wanted it to be consistent. And so the committee began the work on that, and I want to just talk about what we did in the past year. So this past year, we updated our professional development plan. We now track our staff development through My Learning Plan, which allows us to look at a specific teacher and see what professional developments they've engaged in. Our November conference day was, we had a keynote speaker, and that was the gentleman, Alec Miller, and he talked about cognitive behavior, and though we, then we had breakout sessions, and teachers had an opportunity to choose what sessions they wanted. In addition to that, after we concluded that day, we administered a survey and took a look at the data to see, did we hit the mark on that? Were the breakout sessions relevant? Did the teachers feel that it was important for them to take them? Did they learn anything from that? And the survey was very positive as to what the teachers felt we provided them with the breakout sessions. After that, this year, we've also partnered with the Mid-Hudson Study Council to provide mentoring to all of our non-tenured administrators. I will tell you that that probably is one of the greatest weaknesses of Monroe Woodbury and probably most school districts in the county, if not in the state, is providing real, relevant mentoring to our administrators. As a matter of fact, today, all of our non-tenured administrators met with their mentors and had a session this morning. They will continue this work throughout the year. We're a bit different than any other district because we are required to do it to our first year non-tenured administrators. We are committed to all four years. We feel that this work is hard, that our administrators, that the job of an administrator can be very lonely, and so, we feel that it's important to provide them with this mentoring. The last thing that you see there is that, not second to last, is that we've been doing an awful lot of work with Readers and Writers Workshop. And so, this was something that we began probably about five years ago, and we're now in year five, and we've partnered with Teachers College. And so, the professional development is ongoing, and I think that that's one of the things that teachers were looking for, not just providing professional development year one. They want us to provide it for years to come to make it sustainable. And so, that's another example of the district making a commitment not only to the program, but to the professional development. Lastly, we also collaborated with Champions Academy, and the reason we did that is because we administer a STAR assessment, a STAR reading assessment. And so, one of the things that we've done in the past is give teachers a new tool and then say, okay, figure it out. We're going to give you one session, and you need to be able to figure this out and be able to present it effectively. What we decided to do, and what we committed to do, was partner with Champions Academy so that the teachers understand the assessment and also are able to read the actual report that comes from that, so that they can then sit down with parents and talk about what the STAR assessment indicates for their particular child. Another thing that this task force did was that they developed a protocol for the MW Curriculum Manual. And then, something new that we're doing this year is they developed a matrix to track the number of college credits that each student earns. So, we know that we offer our students college courses with college credit. However, we have not in the past tracked how many college credits the students actually receive. That is something that the colleges receive. So, what we've decided is Dr. Hassel created, working with a team, created a matrix to be able, for this year, for the first time, to be able to track the number of college credits that our students are taking and earning, which can be two very different numbers. The next thing is, is that we wanted to make sure that there was a seal of bilinguism, that it's a new seal that students can achieve, and it's looking at students who speak a foreign language and giving them a designation on their diploma that they actually speak another language and are fluent in another language. And so, we have been, last year, we had 17 students that attained that, and this year, we have two new languages. Dr. Hassel, what's the new languages there?
We had two students that achieved bilinguism in Serbian and Portuguese.
So, again, this is another designation on their diploma. So, we increased the number from last year to this year to 45%. So, that was 17 to 24 students. And the goal is to continually increase the number of students. The next thing was, we increased the number of college-bearing courses. This year, we offered two new courses called Generation Health and Exploring Teaching as a Profession. Next year, we're scheduled to offer Forensic Science, Marine Biology, and Human Biology. Our next task force was Social Emotional Wellness and/Student Behavior. What we realized when we wanted to look at, when we looked at the survey, there were several things that the responses led us to believe, and one of them was that people were concerned about student behavior. They were also concerned about the code of conduct, and that's why you saw that the two, the Code of Conduct Committee and the Student Engagement or Student Emotional Wellness Committee, they met together, and they decided to work on this collaboratively because we see that the two go hand in hand. And they formed what's called the District-wide Code of Committee, sorry, Code of Committee Conduct, there's too many words up here, Code of Conduct Committee, I apologize. And so, there's two different groups. One group will look at the social, emotional curriculum and resources, and the other one will look at the Code of Conduct and the Discipline Group, which is something that I think Dr. Hassel talked about that we changed in the Code of Conduct this year. So, training is extremely important for our staff, so we trained the staff in trauma-informed classrooms. We trained our PPS counselors and administrators on DVT, dialectic behavior therapy. We did a four-day training. The high school and the middle school health teachers attended a three-day training to learn step A component that's taking DVT and embedding it into the curriculum. We also hired a cognitive behavior consultant agency to look at therapeutic techniques and work one-on-one with our staff. We collaborated with Orange Regional Medical Center because we felt that it's important to partner with various organizations because we want to make sure that we know, that they know what our students need, look at protocols and resources. We worked with Greater Hudson Valley Health Service to identify programs that we could offer our parents for free. We implemented Warrior Kids Program at North Main. We collaborated with the Office of Mental Health. So, one of the things that we're looking at is, we want to get a high school clinic at our high school to service our parents within our community and in our schools. And so, we're in discussions with them, and hopefully, we'll be able to do that. We also partnered with Access for Living Team to ensure families in need receive mental health services at no cost. We piloted Choose Love at some of the schools, and I know that some of the board members visited, I believe, Pine Tree. And we've chosen Choose Love as our SEL, and SEL stands for Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, K8. And we continue to train our bus drivers, our safety officers, and our SROs on youth mental health first aid. And that is allowing, giving them training in signs and symptoms that they can look at when they see a student who may be in distress. Our next is the Student Experience Task Force. And those results from that survey said that our students felt that they weren't connected with the adults. They felt that their voices weren't heard. And so, one of the first things that we did was we implemented a standing meeting with administrators, staff, and students to focus on the importance of student engagement and student voice. We set quarterly sessions with approximately 15 to 18 students, not eight, 15 to 18 students who represent the middle school and the high school. And so, we met with them, and they set the agenda. So, they didn't come into the meeting with an agenda that I set. They set the agenda, and they talked about what they thought was most important. As a result of that, we increased our student club offerings as identified by the students, and they also helped define characteristics of what they thought was an effective classroom teacher. One of the big things is, as a result of these meetings with the Student Engagement Task Force, is that we, when I say we, I mean MW Cares and the high school, have selected specific student assemblies to meet their needs that they had talked about. So, you'll hear throughout the year that there, I think there's about five, is there five different assemblies? And this came from the students and what they felt were their needs. So, again, it's helping them share their voice. In addition to that, this past August, we attended a national school climate conference where our students talked about voice and how they share their voice in the school. And this coming September, we're going to be attending a National We.com Youth Summit, and I think that's something that Mr. Cassi and Don Tobart will be putting together. But it's a big conference that focuses on social justice and helps build our students' leadership skills. And we continue to engage our students in decision-making at all building levels. And lastly, we made sure that there was a student on each of our task forces. Our last was our communication, and one of the things that people felt that they were concerned about was that there were internal protocols that weren't being followed. There was confusing messages that were sent out from various different buildings, and the community at large felt that they wanted to hear more from the school district, especially those who didn't have children. So, the communications task force developed protocols for formatting content in district-wide communication systems. They actually designed a template with a letterhead for all buildings, again, making sure that we're all doing the same thing. They trained 57 administrators and their building clericals, and they created internal communication protocols that covered topics including media relations, district spokesperson, logo use, district website, and social media platforms. And I think the key here is that we want to make systemic changes so that when one person leaves, this is the way that we do things, and that's really important. So, this takes a long time, but again, our goal is to make sure that it's not the person who's in charge, it's the protocol that we follow regardless of who is there. And the last, we established communication liaison in each school, and we conducted student surveys of staff to learn more about information sharing in each building. The last thing, the last items that I'm going to speak about is the alumni. So, one of the things that we've heard, and I think there was a student who came up, I think it was your son, who came up and said, hey, we're not tapping into our alumni. So, we, meaning our communication specialist, Carol, she sits, she actually communicates through Facebook with all of these different alumni groups. And this past year, we had a very big alumni reunion. I think we had over 700 people attend, and we had 20 of those alumni come to the high school and visit, which was really nice. And so, as a result of that, there was a scholarship that they put together, and they are now giving us a scholarship for $10,000, which is going to go for one of our high school students for the new scholarship, which is MW Alumni Inspire Success. We're going to continue contact with classes that have moved on and through social media, and we are going to create regular alumni features on our social media platforms. I know that it was Don Tobart and Tina who worked on a folder packet to give, a welcome packet to give to every family, and if you look, you'll see a little mock-up of that packet. What's interesting about the folder is that it's going to be unique to the parent who comes to the district. So, if you're a parent who has a child that's going to be in first grade and in third grade, your packet that you will receive is specifically for you as a parent, and it's a welcome packet because it's our first time, our first opportunity to meet with new families to the district. And so, that should be completed somewhere around September, right?
On the end.
Yes.
Maybe the end of September.
To the end, we should have our packet completed. And again, it's a way of us welcoming families to our district. We're also in the process of creating a video, a welcome video, so that people look and see who we are as a district. And you will see in your calendar this year is who to contact, a way for parents to say if they have a problem, who do they call, and if, you know, and how do you go through the chain of command to be able to get your answer or your question or your issue resolved? In addition to that, we've developed a quarterly newsletter, which I would have printed for you, but it's an e-newsletter, and BarGov doesn't allow me to print things, but it's in your email. We also have a series of Crusader Chats to discuss important issues. And lastly, this year, for the first time, we introduced Facebook Live, which I thought went really, really well because it gave people the opportunity, who aren't able to leave their home, to be able to communicate to us and get their questions answered. So, what's next? We're going to administer the survey again in January of next year because we want to administer at the same time that we did in 2018. We'll be able to assess where we are in our progress. We're going to look at our strategic attempts. Again, they're in your books. We're adding an additional goal this year, which is to improve student attendance. We have a mechanism within our power school to be able to look at attendance, and our goal is to improve attendance, so I'll be talking a little bit more throughout the year about that. And then, in March 26, which is a board meeting, I will update the board on our survey results. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments?
It was a great job.
That was great.
I think this is what we initiated several years ago, and the progress that's being made and the intent all remains so valid to help in the experience of educating our kids and getting everybody on board and on the same page and providing, and listening to people and absorbing what they have to say and then responding. I think that's so important. Sorry, Don, you were...
Oh, no, I, you know, I think the thing that the board knows, but the public may not know, is we assumed that there was a template available somewhere in New York State. And what was interesting, after the cabinet and Elsie did an extensive search, including contacting a lot of the state organizations, the best that I think we found was a promotional marketing brochure for a school. There was no template for how to build a strategic plan for a school district, which is just simply amazing, and what you've done is extremely, extremely good. It's very, very...
I think that it's the commitment on the part of the people who are members of the committee. Their commitment is unwavering, and they believe in this work, and they want to, I think everybody who sits at the table wants the school district to be the best that it can be, and there are so many things that have come because of this, the conversations, the collaboration, as I said, the collaboration between the student, the social, emotional wellness, and the code of conduct, and marrying those two together because they make most sense, and just the development of MW Cares that came out of that, and the, all the different things that we are doing as a district is really about people honing in on what's best for our students and making it work as a team. So, I thank you, I thank you, and for your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have a budget poll exit survey summary.
Good evening, both of us, Superintendent Mrs. Rodriguez and my colleagues. Continue on what Mr. Hubert said about listening to community. In the last four years, we've been asking the community who come to vote at Central Valley to take a poll. What it does for us, basically, it provides us the data points, and more importantly, it gives us a chance to listen to what the community is saying. And we've been actually fortunate to work with the different stakeholders throughout the last four years, but it's very important as a district for us to listen to what's in the voter's mind. And it may be different year to year because the theme might be different, the issues might be different, but it is important for us as a school district to collect this critical data. What it tells us, it gives us some data points, and then, basically, based on that data point, we can design our next three to five years like the strategic plan. What we have done so far, so last year, we have about 1,601 voters who came and cast their vote. Out of them, about 26%, 420 voters were able to take the survey. And survey is a big part for us to collect the data, and in generally, we have asked them a variety of different survey questions in the last four years, and most of the time, the survey questions vary year to year, depending on what's happening in the community, also depending on what's happening around us. But in last year's survey, we asked very specific questions related to their satisfaction about the education in Monroe Woodbury, their strategic plan concern, their boundary concern. Almost about 93% of the folks who took the survey rated the education in Monroe Woodbury as either excellent or in good condition, which is a tremendous support that we can see in terms of data from our community. We also asked them the questions about the future capital projects, and in this question, we asked them to choose the two most important and the two least important based on the menu that we gave them as a question. And as the community, as the voters who took the survey, they actually had the two most important, basically, the points were security systems and the computers and technology. The two least important that they rated were the new administration building and sale of unused or obsolete building or land. We also asked them about what topic that would be most interesting to you, and they, in this question, they could either pick one or select all. And based on, from the highest selection, the most important topics that came up were school boundary alteration, Route 32 or 17 traffic interchange, fair funding for public education, strategic planning, and property tax gap. This is kind of a snapshot in the voter's mind at that time when somebody's sitting down... in the voter's mind at that time when somebody's sitting down and taking the survey. So it is very critical for us to collect this information, that how this is impacting our community. One other question that we asked about was a free fall comment that the voters could tell us, or the person who's participating in the survey would tell us in general comments, not selecting the à la carte menu. And the most frequent comments that were mentioned about how appreciative they are for the district and the staff and administrators to provide the better education for our students. They were also concerned about the changing demographics, concerned about the taxes are too high, academic and class sizes that need some improvement. One of the biggest points that we noticed as a theme was safety. Some of the interesting topics that air conditioning was mentioned a few times. But if you notice that air conditioning and taxes are too high, there are kind of the two sides of the coin. So it was very interesting that there were some folks who were interested in the air conditioning in all of our buildings versus some folks were saying the taxes were too high. The other interesting point that came for the school board about how can the community get more information about the candidates? And I think this was directly about how do we do a better job of sending this information out next time when there's an election for the Board of Education. And that's pretty much it. So it's very interesting to see what's in the voter's mind or the person who's taking the survey in mind. And it's very critical for us to collect this information. Yes, it's not always 100%, and it's only 1/4 approximately folks who took the survey. But this gives us a very interesting insight of what's really out there, and how can we actually utilize these data points to make our surveys that we provide to our students and staff and community better year in, year out.
Perhaps displaying my ignorance, but I don't know that the school board can or should have a function in getting more information about the candidates out to the public. And that's a slippery slope.
Correct.
And there may be actually laws and regulations that restrict, you know, restrict that, because it could be perceived we're favoring one candidate over another if we start to get into the election process, which should be totally separate. So we've had organization-sponsored Q and A sessions. We had, I think, this year, a dearth of information in the photo news. Usually, there are letters of support.
I think that was the difference, that what happened this year is that the photo news did not print anything about the candidates, and they normally do.
Right. There were very few letters in there, and then there wasn't that section asking all the board candidates what they thought about X, Y, and Z, and what they were going to do, and who they were. So...
I think the Facebook, I'm sorry, I think the Facebook, there are people that reached out via Facebook. But for those people that are not connected to Facebook, they, you know, maybe they can email, they can always, there's biographies about us. Maybe they don't know certain things, or maybe they have a specific question.
I mean, it's a marvelous idea to get more information out. It's not the province of the school board to do that. I mean, 16...
It's the candidate, the candidate should make their business to put it out there.
Yeah, or the district. But I mean, you look at 1,601 or however many voted, which is, what, less than 8% of the registered voters. I mean, it would be great also to drum up more interest in voting for school board members for the budget and for capital projects, because we're going to be having more capital projects coming down the pike with schools like, I don't know, Pine Tree. There are a number of schools that have old systems of heating, and they just need to be, and it ain't sexy, but it needs to be done.
So I just want to add something else. One of the things that I discussed with Maeve as the student rep is that every year, we have the candidates get up and speak to our students, because we want our students to start participating in what they're responsible to do, which is go out and vote. So this year, I did say to Maeve that she was going to have to organize it ahead of time, and maybe we can use that as a forum to allow people to get up and ask questions. Because what we want to teach our students is that they have a civic responsibility to go out and vote, but that we also want to teach them that before you go out to vote, you need to know what you're voting for. So she will take, she will take the lead on that this coming year.
We had one.
We had one last year. It wasn't open. So that's going to be a discussion with our student representative to see maybe that it should, might be open. I don't know. I see John grimacing back there. But to take a look at that, because again, we want to make sure that our, that the community has an understanding of who's running for the board, because these positions are very important in supporting the district and moving us forward. And we, again, it's about educating our children to make sure that they know that they have a civic responsibility to go out and vote. And I would hope that more people go out and vote, because this matters.
And take the survey as well.
Well, I got a question regarding that. This was done the day of the budget vote as people were leaving. Has there been any thought to finding another alternative to get more participation? 26% out of those who voted out of the entire population, something like a survey to go or a one-day-only link where they could take it maybe at their desk? I know a lot of people are rushing in on the way to work or after work, they just want to vote and go home. They don't necessarily want to sit there and spend, you know, five, 10 minutes taking a survey. Is there another alternative that could be presented for people who just might not have the time at the moment to survey, get a little bit more feedback?
We can certainly take a look into that, too. What it does when you take inside, in-person surveys, almost like you were there to make a difference, versus if you open up for public, kind of...
No, no, I don't mean, I don't mean public. So if you were leaving, and can you take the survey? I got to get to work. Well, here, here's a link.
Oh, here's the link, okay.
It's only good for today.
Absolutely.
You take the survey, you voted, you still have the option of taking it, rather than, I got to get to work, I'm not going to do this.
Good point. Yes, we can certainly take a look into that, yes.
You also have absentee voters. So how do they get to take that survey?
Same, yeah, so it's...
So you have to at least link something to them, because there's plenty of those.
Do we have a number of absentee voters? Do you know the number of how many? I'm just curious, because we really have such a poor showing that, you know, it seems like...
How many do we have? About 50 usually, something like that?
Something like that.
Yeah, around 50.
My recollection. All right. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Bargav. Do I have a motion for the resolution on the BOSI's district superintendent salary cap, which reads, "Resolved that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation to eliminate the limit on BOSI's district superintendent compensation." Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So Carrie, reports from the Board of Education. Chris, policy?
Policy, we're going to have a meeting soon. I'm going to let the school open for two weeks, and then Mia will discuss with Elsie. We're going to have to get a date in the calendar for the middle of September to discuss whatever changes were made during the summer and whatever is going to affect us before the year is up. So I'll probably contact Elsie probably in two weeks, let her get through the first couple of weeks of school.
Thank you, Mr. D. Lorenz.
And then we'll set up dates. So, and we don't have anything at this moment, but it's, it will be by before September ends, we'll have another...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Don, visitation?
We are in the process right now of scheduling our follow-up with the high school, and then from there, we will go to the middle school, and then Pine Tree, and we'll set some dates soon.
Et cetera. Good. Thank you. Don?
So on the facilities side, I think we covered it already with the presentation of Patrick. And I'm not going to steal the thunder from the audit committee. I think Patrick's got some other great news to present to us.
Do you want to do that now, or is that part of your...
I was going to...
Business and finance?
Yeah, I was going to address that during...
Yeah, it's part of business.
All right, that's it for, and Maeve is not here under the weather. We wish her well. Personnel, Matt?
I'd like to begin by saying thank you to everyone as we were updating personal items as of this morning. So thank you to everybody. Huge thank you to the three ladies in the HR office, Lee, Mary Ellen, and Tara, for all they've done. Before I ask for formal approval, we do have three people here who are on the agenda tonight as far as being approved. We have Mallory Spina, who's in the audience. She's going to be our new art teacher at Sapphire and Pine Tree. We have Christian Hughes, who's going to be our new Spanish teacher at the high school. And we have Brandon, who you already saw featured here in our summer enrichment presentation, who's going to be our new teacher aide in the aquatics at the middle school.
Yes, that guy. Good to see you.
So, well, assuming you vote yes, congratulations to all three of you. No pressure, everyone. But I respectfully request approval for the items listed under...
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Any grilling of the three candidates in our presence there being...
Mallory said she was up for that. Just...
Really?
She did.
Okay.
Oh, God.
What is the meaning of, never mind. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So Carrie, congratulations. Business and finance, Patrick?
Yes, John. So I would ask for the approval of the items under the business and financial section of the agenda, which include our standard monthly financial reports for June. So this is sort of the year-end report, budget status, et cetera. Reflects, you know, the fiscal year-end status of everything. We have a handful of contracts, approximately half a dozen contracts, most notably, two contracts with the Town of Woodbury and Village Monroe for school resource officers. And one little tweak to the Town of Woodbury contract, there's no date there, but I'd like to recommend we have that as September 4, first day of school. And we had some back and forth literally during the meeting with our attorney, Diana Canino, and the Town of Woodbury's attorney. So there are amenable to that. Let's see, what else? We are requesting surplus transportation vehicles, approximately 11 vehicles. We're awarding two contracts, bids for food service and overhead door services. We have capital project change orders that I mentioned earlier for approval, both the Smart Schools Bond Act and the TURF and HVAC project, affirmation of our school meal prices for the 1920 year, and finally, a resolution to transfer surplus fund balance from the 1819 school year into three reserve funds. We had our annual audit last week. I want to thank the business office staff for that. A lot of work goes into that and a lot of pressure. They rose to the occasion, did a great job. In addition to our $1.9 million give back to the taxpayers to lower the levy, holding our 4% unassigned fund balance, we had a surplus of about $2.4 million after the audit, the dust settled. And I'd like to recommend that we make a contribution of $478,000 to our tax surcharge reserve. Mostly, that's dealing with the full exposure we may experience with the forming the parasite. ELT Harriman is the owner, and we've been advised by our attorneys that that could go against us in a big way. So that would cover us there. Typically, we reserve at a percentage, so we're reserving the full exposure. I'm recommending we do that. Year-end contribution to the capital reserve fund, so $1.45 million to the capital reserve, that would replenish the $4.4 million approximately that we're spending on the HVAC and TURF project. And finally, a year-end contribution to the TRS reserve. We recently created that. It's a fairly new reserve, about $500,000 we're recommending. We put into that because we know TRS, our annual liability there is around $7 million. The employer contribution rates can fluctuate greatly, and I think it's prudent to just set some of that aside to mitigate those changes and those potential increases in the future.
What in general do reserve funds allow us to do?
I would say in general, John, it's like a rainy day fund. And what it enables us to do, if there's a big spike in, well, two things, actually. If there's a one-time expense like capital reserve, we need to save money for future expenditures, enables us to do that. It also enables us to sort of level out big increases. For instance, the TRS, let's say we have a recession and the financial markets are affected. ERS and TRS are then impacted, because they, you know, they have a lot of investments. And sort of the balancing mechanism is the employer contribution rate. So that rate, and we have no say over that, we have no control over that. It's fully external to us, but we have to pay it. So that would, that would be something like, set that money aside to mitigate the budget impact of a big TRS increase.
No questions.
Thank you. Good.
John, I think one of the things that is worth mentioning, and I don't want it to go unnoticed, is of all the things that were accomplished, in a year that we had a over $8 million capital improvement project, we are giving back almost $2 million to the taxpayers because of the efficiency of the district. And I think that's extremely, extremely important, that everything is running, you know, very efficient, the audits, the money's being used very, very efficiently. I think, you know, to me, it's very impressive. You almost, you never hear a school giving taxpayers $2 million back. So I think that's pretty impressive.
Do I have a motion for business and finance?
I just have one question about the tax. How much did we have allocated for the tax surcharge area at 1.3? Or was it below 1?
When you say allocated, do you mean previously?
What did we have? Correct.
We had about 2 and 1/2, and we're going to go up to around 3. Because what we're doing is we're, I'm recommending it's $478,000 net contribution. So the way the tax reserve works is we look at all the exposures and the cases, and if, after a certain period of time, it's 40 years, the cases are inactive, we release that money from the reserve. So this year, there was a release of $932,000, but an increase or a contribution of about 1.4. So the net change was 478,000, most of which has to do with the ELT Harriman site and our potential exposure for a refund there, because there's six to eight years of refunds at stake with that one. And it's, that particular case, we were waiting on the DEC, New York State DEC, to make a ruling on the mitigation, remediation, I should say, for that site, and they haven't done that. And it's strange, we might have to pay the county back.
Correct.
Not the property owner, because the county makes us whole every year. And in this case, the owner is claiming it has zero value, and they're not paying their property taxes. So the county has made us whole, and if at the end of the day, the dust settles, and the owner's right, it has zero value, because DEC has ruled there's an extremely expensive remediation necessary, we would have to pay the county back. And that's why we're recommending we put some of that stuff.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, we have a motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements made by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education Agenda Items 19.1, 2.2, 2.3, 4.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, reports by board and central office. Chris?
I want to welcome new teachers to a new year. I want to welcome, say good luck to all the principals, administrators, school building, everyone. Dan, summer is officially over, yes?
Two days.
Two more days.
You know, on a good opening, and hope everything goes smooth, buses, everybody is, you know, we hope that everything goes well. I'm sure it will. I want to say that I just read that the education icons of the Hudson Valley is honoring Mrs. Rodriguez over here. She's going to be on October 25 as an icon of the Hudson Valley. That's pretty impressive, I think. Just read it last night. Sorry.
Where did you read that?
I was somewhere, somewhere I got an email. I don't know. I said, I think that's her.
Elsie.
Next time.
Oh, the tribe!
I did not say that.
So I just hope everything goes well, and everybody's on their feet, and we, everything's running smooth. So...
Thank you.
Good luck, everyone.
Yeah, I want to welcome everybody to the Monroe Woodbury family as well, and thank you to all the presenters. And yeah, I'm looking forward to school next week, especially for my high school children.
Here, Don?
Yeah. Welcome to all the new teachers, the existing teachers, and congratulations to all of the parents whose students are going back to school. That's it. I think we covered everything else.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I'd really like to welcome the new teachers to our district, and wish everyone good luck on the upcoming school year, all our returning teachers, students, and families. And I hope everyone enjoys this last weekend of summer.
Donna?
Just want to wish everyone a good school year, good luck, and be well. And I want to wish Suzanne a happy birthday on Friday.
Thank you.
Aww.
Aww.
So much love here.
I love the new birthday.
It is so much. Bargav?
So on August 19, we hosted...
So, on August 19, we hosted a conference at the Pine Tree, leading innovation and change in future-ready schools. So, thank you, Mr. Judice, Peter, Andre, for all your help. Dana, you were very helpful, too. We had about 85 educators across the New York State participate, and I think about 15 of our own administrators were able to participate, and it was a really informative session for all of us. We've been working over the summer, some of the exciting infrastructure projects, and we are ready to cut it over the buildings to the new project, new network in middle school, high school, and Central Valley, and that party's done, so we are excited for September.
Very good. Eric?
Thank you to the Code of Conduct Committee for all of the work that you guys started, and thank you to the Board of Education for your approval of the Code of Conduct. Thank you to the presenters, a lot of great presentations tonight. Specifically, thank you to Mr. Judice, to Mr. Martin, and to Mr. Elozovic for overseeing the transition of summer enrichment to Pine Tree, but more, even greater than that, for the amazing experience that they gave to over 600 kids in the program. Looking forward to continuing to develop that. Congratulations to everybody appointed this evening. Congratulations to our summer school graduates. They are moving themselves forward into the next chapter of their life, and enjoy your remaining days, almost a week-
Two days.
-of summer.
Monday doesn't count, everybody's on-
Kids are already coming back, the staff are back setting up the rooms, so it's, you can feel the energy in the air around the building, so looking forward to a great start. Thanks.
Patrick?
So, I'll just echo everything everyone said, you know, welcome to our new staff, congratulations, and I'd also like to acknowledge Peter and Andre and the buildings and ground staff for all the work they did in the summer. You know, folks think we're, people are gone, but there's a lot going on in the buildings, a lot of projects, a lot of cleaning, and I think we are ready to go and looking good, so I, so thank you for that.
Very good. Matt?
Next week is the best week. We hired over 50 certified and classified personnel throughout the summer, so it was a busy summer, but we're well manned and well-womened, I don't know if that's really something you could say, but we have, our slots are filled, and we're excited for next week, so good luck to everyone.
Great. All right.
Yes. Ditto, ditto, ditto. Welcome to the new staff, and thanks to the presenters. Wanted to say that I heard some really good things about the retreat that you guys had, and I guess it was the development that you were just speaking about, where you, you know, about the well care and wellness of-
That was a separate retreat.
That's a separate retreat?
Did you go to a different retreat?
I heard that there was a whole bunch of-
No, it was, she talked administrative-
The administrative-
Oh, our administrative retreat. Somebody said what we did in our administrative retreat.
I heard that it was-
It was phenomenal.
And I am so about, you know, how could you take care or help anyone if you can't, if you're not helping yourself, so I am so about that. And thanks to the presenters and everyone else, and good luck next week, and I have a senior, the last child, and I am like so excited, and time flies. I guess I have to go to the all-night grad party, start that process, and, you know, have a lot of, so, awesome, I know, thank you.
Vice President, Ms. Roddy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to say the fields look fantastic. I'm really excited for the opening, we get our opening ceremony?
Yes, we will have an open for the fields, yes.
In the evening, if I can show up?
Yes.
Thanks. I want to thank not only the facilities committee, but everybody who put all this work into it. It's really going to be a source of pride for the district. I want to thank Mr. Cassidy and the high school for hosting a great orientation for our incoming freshmen, bringing the juniors or older students into it to tour the kids around. I think really puts a lot of them at ease. It's a huge building. I think it took me two years to figure out that it actually went past the auditorium level, that there were two more floors. And finally, I want to welcome back the staff. Hope you had a good summer. Back to the grind.
Elsie?
I want to welcome our new staff, and it's exciting, we're excited to have you here as part of our district. This is a wonderful, wonderful district, so you're in a, you're in good hands. I want to thank all the presenters. I almost had a tear when I saw the fields. I am purposely waiting to go look at it by myself, because Lori, every time Lori sees the fields, she cries. Sorry, Lori, look, she's already, she's already getting, but when you look at the fields, I said something to the new teachers. I said, when you look at the fields, it represents more than just the fields. See, I'm not an athlete, but to me, it signifies that the district really trusts us, because we tried to do this eight years ago, and the committee and the community resoundingly said no. And I think that this is, this is an indication that the community does trust us and does believe what we say, and it is so wonderful to say that we're going to do this in a year, and we did it. So, that really is a testament to our commitment to this community, to our children, and so that's really, really exciting. I also want to remind everybody that you're going to get that e-newsletter, there's going to be a link on there for Go Gold, so if you can, we're looking for everyone to wear gold on our pediatric, well, it's actually, yeah, Pediatric Cancer Awareness Day. We'd love for you to see our district all in gold, so please sign up and buy yourself a t-shirt. We're also doing something color for chemo, where all the buildings are going to collect coloring books for pediatric cancer, if you want to, you know, bring in and donate that. You can also do that at the game, our game in, what's the date of the game? September 27th, so if you want to drop off something at the football field to the game, and then see our beautiful field, do that. We talk a lot about what we do for our students, and I know that the high school, in conjunction with MW Cares, is moving in a direction to do something new, so I'm actually going to give a couple of minutes to John to just get up and talk a little bit about what you might be hearing in the community that we're think, that we are moving in this direction, and it's really important.
I'll use the microphone.
Yes.
Thank you, good evening. With MW Cares, we have really begun to address students' social emotional needs, and we have been really looking at how we've been doing that. In terms of, are we addressing the whole student and what they're doing, I felt this summer, when I was looking at some information, that we really weren't meeting all the things we need to, to help our students also be healthy and safe. Each, every two years, the Orange Osso Bosse administers a youth risk survey, and they ask questions of our students in 8th, 10th, and 12th grade about social media, drug use, alcohol use, things like that, that are giving us an idea of what our students are doing and what they're feeling. We've also, as you know, we use anonymous alerts, and in the past few weeks, I've received some anonymous alerts, even though we're out of school and our disclaimer says we're not checking them during the summer and everything, that have also brought a little bit of level concern. So, I met with the Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Council to talk to them about our statistics from that survey, and the things that are going on, and the things our kids are saying. I developed an impression of what is going on, and, you know, I sometimes have a skewed view on things, I guess, so I felt I needed to incorporate the help of others. So, in the past few days, I met with a group of 20 parents. Yesterday, I met with 15 students. Today, I met with another 17 students, to see if what I was feeling and what I was, you know, bringing together from all this information was valid. Was I making an assumption that these, this information, was I just taking small pieces of information? And in my discussions with all of them, they resoundly supported what I was thinking. And we, as a community, really have an underage drinking problem, and it's become a big concern, and it's a concern of our students. Many of them, you know, I told them we were in Vegas, which we were, but they were very open about what they were saying to us and what was going on, and their concerns, and one of the parts they said is, you know, parents are a big part of this, too. So, we talked about those types of things, and then we also discussed a little bit about MW Cares and how it helped them open up discussions with their parents, and the things that parents told us as committee members of what, the conversations that were going on, how that really moved them and their family, and opened up a differently relationship, a different side of the relationship with their, with their kids. So, with this in mind, we're going to begin a new practice going forward at the high school that I want you all to be aware of, where we're going to be requiring parents and their children to attend one of six possible assemblies, presentations at night, in order to be able to attend our proms. The kids felt in my discussions that, you know, we needed to get the parents involved, and they felt there was, you know, really no way to do that, so I came up with the idea to start this here, with the conversations I've had with the parents, and all staff members have been involved, have been involved as well. There are school districts throughout the country that do something similar, and I feel that we're really going to be able to start shifting a little bit of a culture. It is a culture that, from what the kids are telling me, that is out there, and it's something that is, we can't change overnight, it's going to take time. And we talked about the safety of the kids, and, you know, the safety of parents who might be part of hosting these parties, and putting themselves and other kids, and probably maybe some of your kids that are in here today, in danger. So, we've also, I've also reached out to Orange County Executive Newhouse, District Attorney, District Attorney Hoofler, and Sheriff DeWos, and they support what we're going to do, and I actually have a meeting scheduled with them, and several other of the police authorities that are part of our district, as well as local and state politicians tomorrow, to really discuss what we're doing, how they can support us, and how we can support them. You may remember back in 2016, Orange County Executive Newhouse, District Attorney Hoofler, and Sheriff DeWos put out a new underage drinking campaign that has some components of what parents are doing in their houses as well with students, and we feel that partnering with them, and collaboration, and having their support, we could really begin to make a difference here in our community. Our students' wellbeing and safety and choice-making is a big concern, and we hope, with all that we're going to do, it's going to really help shift the culture. So, as I said, it will be, we're going to offer six opportunities this year to our parents. They're about one hour each, and the thing that I feel is important is that, that if you attend this assembly, and you have more than one child in the high school at that time, both your children come, and that will count. So, if you have a 9th grade student and an 11th grade student, you're only coming to the one assembly. And some of the kids said, you know, maybe you shouldn't do that, maybe you should require them to come to two, kids change, things change, and I said to them, hopefully, like we're doing with MW Cares, we change the culture where parents are going to want to come and receive the information that we're providing to them through these nightly assemblies. So, I wanted the board to know that we are starting this practice. It's not going to be an easy practice to implement, but from the 30 students and the 20 parents that I met with, and the staff that have discussed this with, we all feel that it's an important initiative and practice to begin for the safety of our students and our community.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
May I?
Sure.
I'm totally, totally supportive of this. What's upsetting, my heart is pounding, is because years and years, I have been stating about this whole drug and alcohol issue, and started, that saved a life, and I don't know why it just kind of like went somewhere south, when, you know, the community, even though there was maybe 50 people that showed up, 50 people's 50 people, you could have saved one life, and I just felt that no one was really listening, that there is alcohol and drug problems, and it is in this community. I felt there's a lot of denial here, and I came here as a drug counselor, so I had like firsthand information and knowledge of this, and worked with ADAC, and so we was going somewhere, and then it just fell off the face of the earth. We were supposed to do this every three months, and I'm still waiting to know what ever happened with that.
I think, can I speak to that? I just think that sometimes when you want to have a cultural shift, you're going to get a lot of resistance, and so it takes time for people to understand that they're in a position where, and I think this community is there, right? I think when you started it, it was, there was a lot of resistance, like, that's not really happening, and-
Here, the resistance was in the district. It wasn't the people, because people were dying.
Right.
People are dying right now.
But I think what's happened is, is that in order for people to be vulnerable, they have to feel that they're safe, and so when you create a culture where people feel safe, they can talk about the fact that they are doing things that they shouldn't be doing, and so I just think that it's ready. I don't think that it was anything that you did, because I think that you were 100%-
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it didn't, it didn't continue. That's what I don't understand, why it didn't continue.
I think-
The last person, it was with David Burnsley, and he actually got up and spoke, and then after that, we had two more, and then it just went.
Yeah.
It went south, when we were picking up a little momentum, and it just kind of like, we sat together, we'd be doing then coalitions, we put it out to the community. But you know what? We, if we're going to be that district, and we're going to be the, you know, this community, we have to take the bull by the horn and say, you know what, we can't depend on it happening out there. You know, they're already stressed out with what's happening out there.
Well, it sounds like that's what's happening now.
Yeah, well-
So, that was then, that we're moved forward, and-
Well, no, I'm happy that we're finally at this place, because it is so necessary.
I agree with you, and I think it's developing the partnership, and I think that we're in that position now to be able to do that. But I think the work that was done beforehand was equally as valuable, right? Because it really brought, even if it was 50 people who came, now we're looking at expanding this and being able to discuss this. Like, I don't think that we were ready for this three years ago.
And I do think that MW Cares broke down some barriers, right? Where, you know, it created dialogues and conversations and collaborations and partnerships, and support from, you know, the community and parents, and many people that might not have, you know, been on the same page, and the student-
There wasn't any, there wasn't any advertisement, it wasn't a big hype for it, that's probably also why, you know what I mean?
So, I can't speak to that. I'm just saying, for the current situation, you know, and what Mr. Cassidy speaks about is the student voice has been very loud lately, and I think that that's really what we're, as a district, you know, that's the goal, right? To empower our students and feel safe to-
These programs need communication, and they need participation. So, in three years ago, if you weren't spearheading it yourself-
Exactly.
-and the participation was low, it's not, you know, it goes by the wayside. That's no fault of anybody, but the participation is low, you weren't there every three months running it, so-
No, it wasn't like that.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, so now, the community is backing this whole project, students are backing the project, so let's just be glad that we have it now.
Oh, we're very happy about it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's-
It's about time.
So, in conclusion, thank you for this initiative. Thank you for all of the care and initiatives and kindness that you give to our students, and the attention you provide to safety, the attention you provide to buildings and grounds, paying attention to exactly what you're supposed to do, and caring about what you're supposed to do because it has a direct effect upon the students, is something you always have to keep in mind. When I directed a play, I was very, very well aware of absolutely everybody who went into that. It wasn't like the big director. Every single person was important, and so I thank you, I thank you, everybody who did initiatives all through the summer, to keep this district going, and here we are, launching in how many days, Dan?
Two more days off.
Two more days off, until, thank you, until we start this school year. So, my appreciation to everybody. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.